Are we ready? That got loud.
We ready, boss? Let's go.
Nope. Make sure we're recording and everything. We're at seven. We're at seven oh one. All right. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the, what is today? May, May ninth, meeting of the City of Kalamazoo Zoning Board of Appeals. We are a volunteer advisory board appointed by the City Commission. Would the staff like to take the roll call?
We'll start with Vaden Humber.
Here.
Work.
Here.
Holder.
Here.
Harrington.
Here.
Han.
Here.
Sylvester.
Here.
Thank you. So, for each of the public hearings tonight, public comments will be accepted during the times indicated on tonight's meeting agenda. Community members may call 888-382-9556 during the public comment period where they will enter a queue and will be prompted to offer their comments in turn. Callers will be commenting live. They are not able to leave a recorded message. Where did my agenda go? Are there any announcements or changes to the original agenda?
There are no announcements. I guess I'll bring the change into play right now and just let the viewing audience know from afar that we're going to be taking this grouping of variances in two sections. The first ten variances related to the event center will be first, and then we will discuss and deliberate the remaining seven variances regarding the parking deck.
And I'll lay that out probably a little bit more clearly or a little more in-depth when we get to that point, of course. All right. First is acceptance of last month's minutes. Does anybody have any changes to the minutes?
I move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. A second?
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? None opposed. Approving the minutes. Thank you. So, we're doing things slightly different tonight because this applicant has more than the usual number of variance requests. The way this is going to work is we're going to start with initial comments by staff. There will be a brief narrative and overview by the applicant of the overall project. Normally, we're holding things to a ten-minute time limit, but because of the bulk, the number of things here, we're going to vary that. I'm not sure what time limit to put on the brief narrative, but since it probably is going to give us a lot of like general information, there's no reason it needs to be more than ten minutes, I would think. Then they can get into the specific request of presentation number one, which I believe is request one through ten, which are related to the building sighting. Those variances will have some Q, we can have some Q and A. Staff comment, Q and A from us to the applicant. Staff will make any additional comments necessary. That's when we will open it up for the public comment, and from there, we'll proceed to the finding of fact. And then we will, the board should discuss each, I guess we don't have to discuss necessarily each of them in turn, but we will take, we should be taking a vote, I understand, on each and every single one of these, one by one, just to make sure that the legal line is clear. And then we will proceed to the same thing for number two, which is related to the parking deck variances. It kind of feels like the brief narrative is a ten-minute, the initial presentation on the first batch, ten minutes. Do we feel like we need more than that? If it goes, I'm hesitant to just give unlimited time because then people will fill that unlimited time with unlimited words. And I, I'm, I'm agreeable to extending time, but that's not a carte blanche to monologue till we're dead.
Jesus. Thank you.
Yes. And the same for number two. So, let's try to keep it to the ten minutes, but if need be, we'll, we'll give some extra time there. That's the public hearing format for tonight, which definitely varies from the normal procedure, but is probably necessary for tonight. Do we need to start by having the reading of the applicant? The application into the record?
And I believe that was a question that Ms. Harrington had.
Correct.
So, what you do is read the application into the record and just acknowledge that first group of variances?
So, don't do the whole thing? That, I know I should have emailed you back, but this, I'm sorry. So, do the whole thing or no?
No, so just the first?
The first one, and then we'll go into the, I'm sorry for this procedural mishap on my part.
Yeah, so, so. Yeah, so how we normally like read it into the record?
Sure. So, don't do all of them?
And then go all the way down to, right, right to number ten.
Just go to ten on the, but that's still all that, though?
That'll be the second portion.
So, we'll wait then? Okay.
Yes, yes, so parking deck right here, so that's, that's part two.
Sure. Okay. I'm ready. Thank you.
Excellent. And I suppose I'm supposed to ask, will the board secretary now read the first application, or I suppose applications one through ten into the record?
I can do it. All right. Okay. An application for a variance for provisions of the zoning ordinance have been filed with the Zoning Board of Appeals by CD Arena LLC. The applicant is requesting variance provisions. The following variances for the event center. Building sighting, for the building sighting. Number one, a dimensional variance from chapter fifty dash five point six C one A two to allow front lot coverage relief of forty-three percent from the requirement of seventy percent for the placement of the event center along Kalamazoo Avenue. Number two, a dimensional variance from chapter fifty dash five point six C one A three to allow relief from the requirement that the building occupied the corner of Kalamazoo Avenue and Park Street. Number three, a dimensional variance from chapter fifty dash five point six C one A four to allow a build-to-zone of four feet eight inches to thirty-six feet four inches where a build-to-zone of zero to ten feet is required along Kalamazoo Avenue. Height. Number four, a dimension, a dimensional variance from chapter fifty dash five point six C two seventeen to allow upper floors of the building to be sixteen feet inches, sixteen feet in height, excuse me, where fourteen feet is the maximum height for upper floors. Street-facing facades. Number five, a dimensional variance from chapter fifty dash five point six C four A twenty to allow the ground floor transparency levels of sixty-six percent for Kalamazoo Avenue, fifty-seven percent for Westnich Avenue, and forty-seven percent for Park Street where seventy, seventy, excuse me, seventy percent transparency is required. Number six, a dimensional variance from chapter fifty dash five point six C four A twenty-one to allow zero percent upper floor transparency along Westnich Avenue where twenty percent transparency is required. Number seven, a dimensional variance from chapter fifty dash five point six C four A twenty-two to allow blank wall areas exceeding the thirty percent requirement of, excuse me, on both Westnich Avenue and Park Street. Number eight, a dimensional variance from chapter fifty dash five point six C four B twenty-five to allow only fourteen entrances where the requirement is one per sixty feet totaling twenty-two entrances. Parking and loading regulations. Number nine, a dimensional variance from chapter fifty dash seven point three dash one to allow sixty bike. To allow sixty bike parking spaces where one hundred and forty-four are required based on maximum occupancy. Number ten, a dimensional variance from chapter fifty dash seven point five A one B to allow a driveway for the loading area on Westnich Avenue to be ninety-one feet where twenty-four feet is the maximum driveway width.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, y'all want me to read that last part?
Which is the last part?
Please note that this request is not.
No, go ahead.
Please note that this request will not change the zoning classification in, of the properties.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, now we would invite the applicant up to give us a brief overview. You can just kind of generally give us the brief overview of the overall project, and then you can roll into the presentation on the first ten. I'm going to say just put twenty minutes on the clock and try to squeeze in it in that time, and if we need to go longer, we will.
And before the applicant gets started, staff just wants to mention, so, you know, for, for the board members that have been on the Zoning Board of Appeals for some time, you've noticed as we've adopted these new elements in our ordinance, the commercial zone districts specifically, most of them now have shifted from a traditional Euclidean zoning where the focus is more on, you know, the use of the land and then the development regulations surrounding that to this form-based development standard framework that, that focuses, you know, it still focuses on, you know, we still have permitted uses by zone district, but there is a much greater focus on the relation of the building to the public space, to the right-of-way. And so with that, with this form-based code, the, the building facade facing the public street is, is very significant, and therefore, there is a lot of development standards that apply to that. So, we're in other, you know, past situations, we've had big projects that might have three variances. You know, we have a substantially large number before us tonight, but many of them are, they impact one another. When you shift a building back in a, with a form-based code and you're outside the, the build-to zone, so to speak, that's also going to impact the requirement that a certain percentage of the building is up against the front property line. If there, if there's a street corner and it's supposed to occupy that street corner, it's going to impact that if you shift the building back. So, I'm saying that just to make it more clear, you know, why there's, there's such a large number of, and we did break it down by building sighting and height and street-facing facade, so we tried to group them together to make that, make that point more clear. But with this development having four street frontages and the form-based code putting such an emphasis on the, on the front face of buildings, it, it was, there's, there's really a, hard to get around it with, with the type of facility that is being proposed for the site. So, that's all I have to add. I will turn it over to Steve.
Thank you. Make sure the, make sure we got him on the microphone.
Do I turn it on or do you turn it on? Sounds like it's on.
She, somebody's done it.
Well, good evening. My name is Steve Looney. I'm the project manager for Tower Pinkster. We're the architect of, and engineer of record for the project. I'm going to do the brief overview and introduction of the project, and with me today are Jeff Birzelle, our project architect, and Laura Klosterman, our landscape architect, and I'll be going through the details of the application with you.
She's going to ask you to repeat the names.
I've got, I need you to slow down for just a second.
Sure.
And could you spell your last name for me, please?
My name's Steve Looney, L O N E Y.
All right, and you're the project manager with Tower Pinkster?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And then the other folks, well, I'll get them when they come up. All right, thank you.
Okay. You're welcome. Well, thank you again for the time this evening to present this unique and transformational project to you. It's a project unlike any other in the city of Kalamazoo, and quite honestly, I can't imagine that when the zoning code was developed, it, it anticipated a project like this, and I think that is a result of some of the large number of requests that we have in front of you this evening. So, again, I'm going to present the overview of the project for you, and I guess I don't know, do you all have monitors up there that you can see this?
This one in front of us should be on, but it's not.
We'll get it going.
Laura Klosterman, yep. Jeff Birzelle. B I R Z E L E. K L O O S T E R M A N. Right? I studied that. Yeah, I studied that. I didn't practice any of the rest of this, but I studied their names. She told us we had to be nice to her, so we're going to be very nice to her.
Got a second here. Are you all with Tower Pinkster?
Jeff and Laura and I are with Tower Pinkster, yes.
Okay. Right. It's always, yeah. Wow, it's technology.
It does always work. I don't like when stuff be broken.
We got it. We can see it.
Okay. That doesn't come out of my ten minutes, right?
No.
No.
Appreciate that. So, these, these images that we're going to share with you are images that we've developed. They're a fairly accurate representation. There's a couple of them that are a little bit old, but I'll point those out. But a fairly accurate representation of the design as it stays, stands today. So, we're going to go over, and I, and I think maybe this is a point of clarification, I'm going to go over the whole thing, including the parking deck right now. The whole project, I'm going to present the whole project. Yep, 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 of the whole thing, so. But they'll break out the detail stuff separately. So, this is a, a site plan of sorts, kind of citing or orienting the, the projects between Westnich Avenue and Park Street, between Kalamazoo Avenue and Water, directly west of the new courthouse and east of the Diocese of Kalamazoo. This shows the four unique spaces within the facility. There's the, the main arena on the southeast corner, there's the basketball practice facility along with supporting athletic training and locker room facilities for the basketball teams at Western Michigan University. That corner also is where the Western Michigan University hockey training and locker rooms will be, as well as the Kalamazoo Wings offices and their locker room. Northwest corner, there's a practice ice sheet that will be used by both Western Michigan University and Kalamazoo Wings, as well as available for community use for youth hockey or maybe open skate or things like that. And then in the southwest corner, there is a multi-use event hall space. It's about thirty thousand square feet in total space with twenty thousand square feet of flat floor area for use. Then across the south, the south side of the creek is the parking deck. I see a lot of studying faces, so I want to give you a second to look at that before I flip to the next page. Okay? This is the same image without the units identified. This is an image, if you can imagine, looking west from high above the Cancer Center. The creek is down the middle between the parking deck on the left and the event center on the right. We're proposing an open plaza space to the east of the parking deck and the south of the event center, and then an eleven-hundred car parking deck with some commercial space, three floors of commercial space on the east end of that for development by others. Same area, just a little bit different vantage points. You're kind of looking southwest in this image. These two images are a little bit dated in terms of the architecture of the parking deck, and you'll see those in more detail in future slides here. This image is the south side of the event center, so it's not a street-facing, technically, it's not a street-facing facade, but this is the south side entrance that would be directly north of that plaza space and would more or less face downtown Kalamazoo. This is the view along Park Street, and what you're looking at, the taller volume, is the arena. You notice in this elevation too, we've tried to provide architecture along the pedestrian way that brings the scale of the building down. So, there's a, there's a datum line that kind of horizontally runs around the building to kind of cap that, and then we've provided some storefront entries and vision into the facility, so there's a little bit more pedestrian feel to that. This view is looking from Kalamazoo Avenue, looking south, Kalamazoo Avenue and Park Street, looking southwest. This tall volume is the Basketball Performance Center, so the tallest part of the volume is the, there's two basketball courts in there. To the west end of that is where the Western Michigan University offices will be, coaches' offices, and some training and dining facilities. Below that are locker rooms for the K-Wings and the Bronco Hockey Team. Again, trying to bring a pedestrian feel to that, so there's a kind of a horizontal datum line there with some small, shorter scale elements underneath that. As we continue to move down Kalamazoo Avenue, this is in the center, you're going to see an image that shows this whole elevation in a second, but this is about in the middle of the elevation along Kalamazoo Avenue, and it shows the north side entrance. So, this would be the entrance that faced the north side community and would welcome them into the facility. This is where, you know, maybe the youth hockey programs would be entering the facility or visiting hockey teams or basketball teams, or if the community was to enter the facility to come do an open skate, they'd probably come through this entrance. This vis, this view is looking southeast. This volume is the practice ice. So, this is the, this is a, a portion of the facility that'll be used not only by the tenants of the building, but the community would be invited to use it or rent it. Youth hockey, again, would be able to participate in that space. Again, you'll see a differentiation of materials trying to bring a horizontal datum and bring that datum line and bring that scale down a little bit to a more pedestrian scale. You can see there's a couple of people trying to circle them right there, drawn in for scale, so it's a, it's a tall volume. This is that elevation that I mentioned a moment ago, so this is the entire north elevation as you would look, if the Park Trade Building wasn't there, you would see it in this respect.
And Steve, I don't know if I missed it or not, but the, in the upper right-hand corner, that, that outline is the overall building, and the triangle is showing you where the vantage point is from?
Yes, that, thank you, Pete. I apologize for not mentioning that. So, that gives you some, some perspective of where you're viewing the plan from up here in the upper right corner. So, those, that image is on each slide. The triangle will move, giving you direction. Now, we're along Westnich. This is a view looking kind of northeast. Again, the hockey, the practice ice on the left, the center portion of this is the loading area, so we've tried to make that as, as attractive as possible. I mean, at the end of the day, it's loading dock. You know, there's trash, there's recycle, there's a loading entrance there, but really attractive, filled-up doors for access to that space. A little bit further down Westnich now, still looking northeast, this is the multi-use space, and the glassy look of that is actually a terracotta product. So, you're seeing the, to the right, you're starting to see the, where the creek is, so that would be the separation between the event center and the parking deck, which is still to the right. A little bit further down the creek, again, not a street facade, but just to give you some perspective, there would be a connection between the parking deck and the event center. And now the parking deck. This view is, from a similar perspective, as I was just showing, that, the, the flat floor space, this is looking southeast at the parking deck. Water Street on the very right, we're on Westnich. This is the northeast looking, facing view, so along to the right side is, is along west, I'm sorry, Water Street, and along the left, left side is Westnich. There's three stairs in the facility, one in the northeast and one in the southwest that you're seeing here. All glass, good visibility for security purposes, and then there's also a stair in the center on the north side of this parking deck. A more current view, not of the development of the plaza area, but a more current view of the parking deck itself in the three-story, we call it the white box space. It's, it's a future commercial development space on the east end of the parking deck. So, that's Park Street up the right-hand side of the image and Water on the left. And then a look, a view looking straight west at the parking deck. Again, a more current view of the two images I showed at the beginning. And then this is, again, the overall view along Water Street. You wouldn't see this perspective, really, you don't get this far away unobstructed, but this is the south elevation of that parking deck. Again, the, the attempt to bring some scale down along the pedestrian way and introduce some architecture that was a little more human scale, you'll see that along the left side. Those are brick infills, that's not actually glass, but we'll talk a little bit more about that, I think, during our presentation of the actual request for variance. And that's all I have on the overall project overview.
Excellent. No, we can't. Which ones do you want them to show you again?
Can you please show us the first two pictures that you, the first, yeah, in your presentation?
These?
No, when it was like showing the aerial view in proximity to the Cancer Center, Parks Trade.
Those ones, okay.
Yeah. So, what's current, go ahead, Beth, I'm sorry, honey. Go ahead.
The parking structure, it's ten stories, correct?
I think it's eight, Jeff. It's eight.
Eight, okay.
Where, like, what's currently right there?
In the north, where it says basketball courts, there is a, a flat parking lot that's owned or was owned by the county, and the rest of those sites are either dirt or some remnant of paving. Cooley and Eleanor Streets are still intact there, but they've been vacated and I think are under the ownership of this developer.
Remember where that, like, the way I'm viewing it is like, you know where that gymnastics gym was? That got, that's there, correct?
No, the gymnastics thing would be.
It's down here.
As we're looking at it, it's to the right of the parking deck.
Yeah, it's right down here, I think, and I think it's been taken down.
It has been gone. Yeah, it's gone, but.
Like, that's gymnastics thing, empty space.
Over there, on the other, on the left side of Westnich?
It feels like they dump snow or whatever over here all winter. I mean, like, yes. The, the funeral home was up at the corner.
Okay.
You're in the right, you're doing it right.
And then that's Park's Trade up there.
Park Trade is on the-
Over there.
Right here, across from the courthouse. The new behavioral health building is directly across the street.
Thank you.
And then with regard to the future commercial space in the deck, could you tell me a little bit more about that? Like, how many, I was just trying to get a visual on that?
Each floor is approximately 3,000 square feet and so there's the potential for a tenant on each of the three floors.
Okay. Alright, so you're looking at three of the floors in the parking structure, they can have a tenant?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. What I don't think we illustrated really well there is the interest, what I think is an interesting component, I'm going to go to the next slide, an interesting component of the parking deck and it doesn't speak to tenant ability, is that a word? I don't know. But we've opened the space on the first level up to pedestrian pass-through, so there will be on Water Street, the anticipation is that the students or others that are coming by bus that will be dropped off on Water Street would be able to pass through and under the parking deck on their way into the facility. If you've been to a Western hockey game and the lunatics line up around the building and outside, that's the anticipated use of that space.
Excellent.
It's very important to the university that we maintain that energy, as you can imagine. I think it's a differentiator.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Loney. I think you said Jeff Brazel was going to talk about the event center building variances, the 10 that, or perhaps it was Ms. Clo-, whoever. Somebody come talk about the 10 building variances that Ms. Harrington read into the record.
Hi, I'm Laura Klosterman, this is Jeff Brazel. We are going to tag-team this section. We do have 10 variances, so we will attempt to work quickly, but there are a number of them to work through. We put them in a, as logical and I think as simple in order as possible, so hopefully that can make some sense to you. And some of them do, as noted previously, tend to fall in clusters. So there are reasons, these are occurring and those tend to kind of domino into other variances. So I'm going to touch on the building sighting first three. I will hand it off to Jeff for the height and street-facing facade items and then we will both address the parking and loading regulations items.
Thank you.
The first slide I have up here is a slide just to give you a sense of, we've done our homework here and where we're getting some of our choices on, this is the zoning map. The site is a site that had been four parcels, so as Steve kind of spoke to, there were two streets running through the site, those have been vacated. The zoning on three of those four parcels is D2. The fourth parcel is D3. It is our understanding that the site becomes the zone of the majority of the parcels as it becomes one whole parcel. So we are submitting under the D2 zone. Then looking at use tables, we have a assembly and entertainment sport use in this venue. That makes sense under the D2 zoning for the use flex, so we're submitting these under flex. And then I've put a whole site diagram here, I'm not going to dwell too long on this, but this gives you a sense overall of all of the variances on one site. Maybe I'll come back to this if necessary. Starting in the building sighting variances, the first variance request is for a dimensional variance for placement of the event center along Kalamazoo Ave, front lot line coverage. The front lot line is along Kalamazoo Ave and it is set back slightly. The blue line, if you look up there, is 10 feet back from the property line. That red line up there shows the property line of the site. So that front door, as you can see in that 135 foot, does come under that front lot line coverage, but the areas to the right and to the left of it do not come under that front lot line coverage. One of the primary reasons this is occurring is that we are providing for access of the Kalamazoo Valley River Trail through that section and you will see that on the next three sheets. So these are all corollary. The second building sighting variance that is being asked for is related to the occupancy of the corner. The areas pointed out in green with a number three show the corners for the event center. The corner to the left with a three is occupied, so we do meet it in that section, but the corner to the right on Kalamazoo and Park Street is not occupied. Once again, this is because the building is set back beyond that 10-foot boundary line shown in blue. One of the main reasons being the Kalamazoo Valley River Trail runs through that area and this sheet, you can actually see where that trail will run in the dashed line. And then the third building sighting item on here is the front build-two zone, which according to code allowed is a 0 to 10-foot distance. The green lightly shaded area here along Kalamazoo Ave and along Park Street show the areas where we are beyond that 10-foot. So we are asking for, really for that to, what we have is a 4'8" to a 36'4" distance in those areas. It varies a bit, but that does allow for that trail to go through and around that corner. I think those are all the building items for sighting. I can pass it off to Jeff for the height.
Yeah, good evening. Again, my name is Jeff Brazel. I'm project architect with Tower Pinkster, so it's a pleasure to be with you tonight. The next four or so variances we've combined graphically on, we didn't separate the slides based on the different variances because they all kind of apply to the building's exterior elevations. The first item is regarding height. It's number four on your list and we're seeking a variance for the floor-to-floor height. As Steve mentioned earlier on, the ordinance calls for a maximum upper floor height of 14 feet. We're seeking a variance for 16 feet. Multiple reasons for that, but the main reason is, as you can imagine, for a building of this size, the level of mechanical, electrical plumbing systems that need to serve this facility are going to be quite, quite large. In addition to that, due to the size and some of the spans and some of the interior spaces, the structure gets to be quite large. So trying to weave all of those systems through the building to serve the various spaces, we really needed that extra, that extra height to accommodate that. Another side benefit to the extra height is that it provides some opportunities on the interior to provide some very interesting architectural components to create a more kind of dynamic interior. So it's kind of twofold in terms of the need to try to seek that, that extra height in the upper floors. The next item is street-facing facade number five, that's the ground floor transparency. We're seeking variances for each of the street-facing facades. Again, as you can imagine, for a building of this size, the linear square, the linear footage of the footprint of the building is quite large and due to the uses, the varied uses inside the building, there's different requirements for the amount of light that we could allow in to still provide the function of the interior spaces as well as kind of control the security of the facility itself. So we're seeking a variance of, for Kalamazoo Avenue, which is this elevation right here. And again, this is for the ground floor, which is typically, I think 70% is the minimum transparency required between the elevations of two feet and eight feet. We're at 66% transparency for Kalamazoo Avenue, so we're seeking a variance for that. Westnidge Avenue, which is this bottom elevation right here, again, we tried to get as much glass and transparency as we could, but we're at 57% for Westnidge Avenue. Again, this is the, this lower left-hand corner is the practice ice facility, so we were able to get some glazing in there with some solar shades. So obviously with it being ice, we wanted to try to minimize how much solar heat gain you get from the, from the natural light. So the center portion on Westnidge, again, is the, Westnidge is really kind of the service side of the building. So again, with the loading dock, you're kind of limited in terms of how much transparency we can get into that, that zone. And then the event center is this other lower right-hand section. And again, we tried to get in some glazing in there, but overall for that facade, we're at 57%. I'll flip to the next one and then we're at, also seeking a variance for Park Street where we're at 47%. Park Street is this elevation down here. And again, the blank, the areas that are not glazed are typically restrooms or support surfaces, or support spaces within the building itself. So where we could, we tried to maximize the amount of transparency, but we are seeking a variance for Park Street as well. The next item, street-facing facade number six, that's the upper floor transparency. Can you guys hear me okay? I'll jump back. For the upper floor transparency, we're seeking a variance primarily for Westnidge Avenue, which is the, again, back to this elevation here. We are at 0% transparency for the upper floors and again, that's primarily driven by the functions of the spaces. So the practice ice is in this, this section, so west facade gets a lot of direct sunlight and so we really were limited in terms of trying to control the heat gain on the ice itself. So that's why we really had to keep that solid. The center section again is utilitarian, that's the loading dock area. So this upper level portion is an outdoor farm for the mechanical equipment, so we're screening that. So there's a screen wall up here at the top that will conceal that equipment so you don't see it, but again, not an opportunity to provide transparency for the, for the equipment. And then again, in the multi-use, multi-event, or the event center portion, that can be, it's a convention center type space. It can be rented out for various activities which need to be light controlled and even sound controlled. So again, we were limited in terms of trying to get glazing in that upper portion. So that's the primary driver for the Westnidge elevation variance request. The last one with respect to these slides is the street-facing facade number seven, that's blank wall limitations. Those kind of go hand in hand with what we talked about. So there again, we're looking for a variance request of Westnidge Avenue, which again is this, where we have an 82% amount of blank space. Again, that's for all the reasons that we just talked about with the transparency. And then we're looking also for a variance at Park Street where we're at 38% blank space. I think 30% is the, is the ordinance maximum for blank space. Primary driver for Park Street is this volume right here, which is the practice basketball courts for Western. Again, direct light doesn't always play nice with, with the function of the, the basketball practice for glare and for a variety of reasons. So that's the main driver for that, that variance. The next item is the street-facing facades number eight, that's the entrance location variance. We're seeking a variance for the quantity and the location of entrances. Again, this kind of goes back to the overall size of the building and the various functions that fall within. We've tried to cluster the main entrances for security reasons, but also just efficiency of access. So kind of the main entrance at the north is in this section right here. The main entrance is at the, for the arena is in the southeast corner and the main sort of entrance for the event center and student access to the arena is in this cluster right here. So all of these green arrows that you see, we've included the south elevation of the event center, even though that's not part of the variance, it's just more for reference. But as you can see from the type of spaces, we weren't able to get the entrances at every 60 feet, which is what the requirement is. And again, that's for security and just access reasons that we, we could not meet that. So, yep.
Can I have you pause right there for a minute? So in the packet, the last diagram, so if you can't clearly see where the green arrows are that identify the doors, the last diagram in the packet has that same image. Yeah, it just, it just says parking and loading and access is what it's labeled. Okay, okay, I just, I just saw a lot of flipping and I wasn't sure if they're having trouble seeing the arrows up there, okay.
Oh, gotcha.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. So there again, we're seeking a variance to, based on the linear, the linear footage of the three street-facing facades, we came up with a requirement of 24 entrance locations. We're providing 16 locations, even though those locations do group a bulk of, there's multiple doors, individual lease, but the cluster of entrances were, were less than what would typically be required. Next, I'll turn it over to Laura for, talk about bike, bike parking.
So request number nine is for a variance with the bike parking. Due to the nature of this building, we have, the way the math works with what code is asking for bike parking, we have so many people coming to this place that it's a lot of bike parking. It's 144 is what they're asking for. We're at, looked at the site to see what we could logically provide and are asking for 60 bike parking to be allowed. On this sheet, I've highlighted those areas in green. There would be 30 spaces to that north and easterly corner and another 30 spaces that would be covered and underneath the first, on the first floor, but underneath the roof of that parking deck. So we think that would be an amenity that, you know, they're out of the way of the elements and the ones to the north, I think, would be well-used with their proximity to the trail as well. So I'll let Jeff speak to number 10.
Yeah, and the last variance request with, with respect to the event center is for the driveway width. Again, we've designated Westnidge as kind of the main service facade of the building and we've tried to really be conscious about consolidating all of the utilitarian access to the building. So the loading dock, we've located on the west side of the building and there's a maximum dimension of 24 feet for a driveway, we're seeking 91 feet. Again, that, that larger size is due to just the support of the building. So if you imagine food service deliveries, trash and recycling services, there's opportunities in the loading dock for broadcasts. So if, you know, Western gets broadcasted for their basketball or hockey, there's a spot in the loading dock for broadcast trucks, also for concerts, you know, talent buses, we needed space for those to park. So that's really the driver for how big that, that loading dock is, which leads to the 91-foot width driveway variance request.
Excellent, thank you.
Sure.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for the applicants with respect to the first 10 of these requests? I do as well and-
I just have one, real quick.
You go ahead.
Thank you.
I mean, I could go through them and just make up questions, but you go ahead.
I just want to know what the affiliation, what is CD Arena LLC, what's the affiliation with Western?
The affiliation that CD Arena has with Western is just the tenant.
They're the tenant, okay.
Western Michigan University will be the tenant, much like K-Wings would be a tenant in this space.
And that's already been worked out? So this is like built to suit then?
I suppose it could be considered that, yeah. I mean, they've been, they've been part of the design process, they're engaged at this time.
Yeah, so it's built to suit, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to start with number 10, because it was the last one you covered. So my curiosity is that, would you be allowed actually 24 feet of driveway on each of these roads? Like 24 on Westnidge, 24 on Calum Zoo Park and Water? If it came down to it?
Yeah, I think actually you could probably have, like Steve said, you could probably have more than that, more than the, you're talking, you could probably have multiple 24-foot wide driveways, is that what you're asking?
Well, yeah, that's what I'm getting at, is because the site has four frontages, if it's allowed, now, obviously, there's maybe some different zoning here, where 24 feet is the maximum width, you could, not conceivably within the design of a rational event space, you could put 24 feet, 24, 24, and 24. So 91 in one spot is less than allowed, if I'm hearing you, or probably could be substantially less, and is advantageous by kind of consolidating it into one spot.
I think that's a good way to put it, yep. The sum of all that would be available is less than what we're, what we're asking for.
Excellent. And the bike parking, I don't have a hobby horse, and we need to have like tons of bike parking, but I just want to make sure, somebody might care to know, like, what, what other efforts were made to try to squeeze 144 in here? I mean, if you had to get 144 in here, like, where would that have to go?
So they might have to go in that, so there's two primary spaces they would have to go. The, the kind of open space to that bottom right corner is the commons, is what they're calling that. And you saw that probably on the images that Steve showed first up.
Yep.
So that, that's a beautiful public space. There are a lot of intentions for how that space gets used, but if that got filled up with bike parking, it might conflict with the public's use of that space. The space, other space that was a possibility is that space in between the larger arena and the parking deck below. So I think some of our images on that spoke to what's occurring in that space, too. There are community amenities within that section that I think would be interfered with if it were primarily filled with bike parking. And one item I forgot to mention when I was up here was that, it is my understanding that, you know, that 144 would be the largest collection of bike parking anywhere in downtown, so.
Sure. Well, no, you're fine. But I do, I did want to follow up with that, because why not just give up more of the garage space?
Come on, that's my, that was my question.
I know we're not talking necessarily about the garage at this moment, but, but the bike parking obviously is part of this, so why not just give up some of the garage space? Like, how much would that impinge upon that if it were, if it were an issue?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
May staff make a comment related to this?
Go for it.
I, I just want to say that, you know, we, we staff have worked to get this, our table for required bike parking right for over a year now. If those that were on the board back when the Calum Zoo Country Club came before the board for some variances, might remember that the table in place at the time was requiring them to have 240 bike parking spaces. So they, again, were in for a variance, and the Calum Zoo Country Club has a total of 20 bike parking spaces, based on the variance that was granted. So when we look at this calculation, it's based on the maximum occupancy. So for every 50 persons, there should be one bike parking space. The, the scale of this building and the ability to hold 700, 7,200 people for a sporting event doesn't match well with that, you know, that, that calculation of one per 50. And so that's why even staff mentioned in the report that it would be the largest cluster of bike parking spaces in the downtown, throughout the city. So, you know, we are amenable to allowing less bike parking, because looking at all the other modes of transportation for folks to get to the arena, you know, it's, you know, bike parking is one of many. There's buses, there's individual cars, there's people coming on foot, so I just wanted to lay that out.
No, I, I don't want anybody to, to, to take anything wrong from my question, but if we're asking for variances, I think it's fair, because some people, somebody somewhere may care to know why or why not.
I care.
And that's, and that's really, sorry, Remy, I'm not trying to hold you down.
No, you're not.
But that's really what my question is, is just, I, look, I'm going to just forecast or say what my thoughts are now. I don't know that you're ever going to get 60 people to ride to a, to a hockey game in the middle of winter on their bike. So 60 probably seems more than sufficient to me, but I know some people want more than that. So I'm just curious, if we had to get to the 144, it would mean sacrificing either a green space, some of the garage space, or something else is like the end of that equation? And Remy's probably going to ask, well, why not give up some of the garage?
I'm not going to ask that. What I'm, what I'm, because you already asked that.
Thank you.
But I'm just, I'm, it, it's curious to me that we did so much to create those bike lanes downtown, but this is not a requirement. These are the incongruencies that I question. Like, we went through so much to get these interesting bike lanes and congest our downtown area, but now we, we are making accommodations for this, at this mega event center downtown to, like, I'm, I'm trying to understand the logic. I don't understand the rationale, like, what, can I understand that?
Okay, and...
Yeah, help, help me.
And maybe, maybe I didn't explain it right. Because there is no other building in the downtown that has an occupancy like this event center will have.
Understood.
The bike parking table disproportionately impacts this development by requiring 144 bike parking spaces.
How though? How, how does that, how does that?
So staff, staff feels that number is, is overinflated, that there will not be that much bike traffic on a regular basis to the event center. And there's our surrounding businesses that also have bike parking, so this is not the only bike parking in downtown.
That's what I was going to say, that there's, there is more bike parking in the surrounding area, and I chair the Stewart Neighborhood Association. So we've been working with the city on bike racks and things like that, kind of parking. We, we kind of border this event here, so.
So I think what, I think what, I think what Pete is saying is maybe the bike requirements are made for like, I don't know, the Camerica Building, where it's just an, it's just an office building with a few hundred people at most in it at any given time. I don't know what the relative square footages are versus an arena where people are shoulder to shoulder, and there may be 7,000 at a time in the same space, and that's, that's where you're coming up with the, it doesn't make sense for this, where it would make sense for something like that, or even this building here.
Yeah, yes, that could be because the bike parking is calculated based on the occupancy.
It's 7,000 people in there. It's almost 10,000 people. So y'all think that 144 people out of 7,000 something people going to ride their bike? And y'all didn't make 27 lanes so that we could have bike lanes? That's what y'all did that for, so the people can ride their bikes?
I think the staff...
And to stress that, that drive out.
I think the staff rationale makes perfect sense.
Not to me, okay.
Because these people are not coming here for an eight-hour day at work in an office building. Thank you. They're coming for an event, typically an evening event, oftentimes a winter event. They're coming for that event and leaving, so I, I, I agree with the staff rationale.
Okay, I don't though.
I'm, I'm done talking about bikes.
And I think y'all should prioritize that, you should have congruency. If you want, prioritize creating a multimodal community and shift that, then development should reflect that. That's my, that's my thought about it. And I, it's not a question, I was going to talk about this during discussion, but that's my opinion about that.
Did anybody have any questions about the facades? I mean, they'd all seem to make sense to me just from the presentation.
I want to understand the safety issue, too.
What's that?
For number, I want to understand the safety issue. Like, how are we, when we're talking about the light and the function for the street-facing facades, I get the light issue, the transparency needed for the functionality of the ice skating rink, but I want to understand what's safety. Like, what do you mean by safety? What concerns do you have?
Yeah, I think that's more of, obviously, due to the volume of people, we want to try to control the access points to the building. And so a lot of the entrance, a lot of the entrances that we show are egress-only for, you know, in case of an emergency. So we're trying to really control the access to the building for security reasons, so that they can be monitored, and so that we can kind of control the, the, the flow of traffic during a large event.
Yeah, I don't think the transparency was the, transparency wasn't the security, it's the doors that were the security.
Okay, and then, thank you for that clarification. And then one final question surrounding number two and three. So those are specific to the Calum Zoo Valley Trail? What, can you tell me what that was about again? You said something about the Calum Zoo Valley Trail for the dimensional variance for, dimensional variances for two and three.
Yeah, so the building, I think I have it back up here on the screen, the dash line shows where that runs, the...
Does it show where it will run, or where, it shows, that shows where it will run?
It will run, yeah. So the endpoints connect to where it does run.
And right now, though, it runs basically right through the center of your block, or the center of this square rectangle, whatever it is.
Yes. I believe we're required to provide a 10-foot wide path to comply with the standards for that trail, which gets cozy.
So but for having to accommodate this, you might be able to build within the distances required?
Correct.
But this is sort of a, if you want to do this, you've got to keep this on that property somewhere.
Yes.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I wish I would have wrote more what I meant. So with the, that's like to increase walkability, like the, you did it to facilitate walkability?
It's not for walkability. We're, we're required to provide a connection for that existing trail.
You're required to provide...
The trail currently runs through the site, so it, it has to connect somewhere.
And that's what that was for?
Yes.
So you could do, so you could accommodate that requirement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't have anything to ask about the height or the other setbacks or anything. Anybody have anything else to ask on any of that?
No.
No? Excellent, thank you. You guys can sit for a minute. Pete, did you want to add any additional comments to this?
I'm going to ask the key question.
And you will.
While going through the variances, the applicant mentioned, you know, many of the hurdles faced with this first grouping of variances regarding the building sighting. You know, another thing we, you know, staff noted was, you know, the, you know, this, this setback from Calum Zoo Avenue also allows for some bike parking to be on the north side of the building where that main entrance is. And the, the other grouping of bike parking that's in the, in the parking deck is in closer proximity to the south main entrance, which is on the screen right now. So I just wanted to add under the, you know, under those three variances regarding the building sighting, you know, that one other element that, you know, that this does provide for is, you know, positioning of bike parking out front. The floor height, the applicant already touched on the large-scale plumbing and mechanical systems running through the building and the architectural treatments. Street-facing facade transparency on the ground level, and then the upper, the upper floor. So ground-level transparency, you know, because this is a downtown location, you know, the ground-level transparency requirement is 70%, you know, of the, of the facade at the ground floor, and then 20% for the upper floors. So you can imagine how that, this proposed building is in conflict with that, with the ice rink being on the west side of the building. You know, that's where it's, where the wall is essentially, you know, there, well, there's the least amount of transparency, I should say. Well, yeah, 57% transparency on the ground level and then zero on the, on the upper floors. So, you know, so the positioning of the, you know, that multi-use space, you know, does impact meeting the transparency levels as well as on the other sides of the building. You know, the, on the Park Street side, for example, you have the, you know, actual arena, the larger seating area. And so I wanted to comment on that. Blank wall, I don't think there was anything else to add there that was, that kind of aligned with the, the...
Those two go hand-in-hand.
They do, they really do, yeah, yep. And then the entrances, you know, it was mentioned security, it was mentioned the, the volume of, you know, of, of door locations, so they've got 15, where if you go one entrance door for every 60 feet, it comes out to 24 entrances on those three street-facing facades. And again, this is one of those pinch points where having three street-facing facades, like, you know, creates this additional burden. So, you know, but it's understandable for security reasons, it's understandable, also the difficulty with having to put the loading dock somewhere. You know, there's no, no, or there's only a few entry doors in that area. So there, you know, and then, of course, where the interior space is being used for the ice rink or the, or the stadium, you're not going to have a whole grouping of doors right there. So touched on that. And then the bike parking, you know...
I don't beat that horse to death.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and...
Although Remy may have questions about it. So, if, I'm not, I know you had a question for Pete, and if that was what you wanted to ask about.
And is there, is there something else that, that staff missed on that? Is there, you know...
No, my questions are just, I, I, I want to make sure anybody out there listening who really cares got some discussion of it.
I, I do have a question about, for staff, about 16 feet in height. Y'all, I'm not trying to pretend like I'm an architect either. Like, I don't, I don't know, I'm just asking questions because I want to know. So...
Well, the 16 feet in height, I believe what I heard, and somebody is free to correct me, is it's got a lot more mechanical systems, it got to go somewhere. And because, plumbing and HVAC, and because it's not like a normal building where you would have, what I took from it, where you'd have interior supports for things, you've got a lot, much longer span, which means you have to have a taller sort of roof system and whatever to hold.
What's about to be in there?
So that would be...
The mechanical system is going to be in there? Or the, like, what's about to be in there?
And maybe it's got to have that kind of beefy, to hold that on the roof or something, too.
Sure, yeah. So if you imagine a typical office space may have an eight-foot ceiling, you've got a space above that. We have some volumes in here that are taller than that also, so you may have a 10-foot ceiling or, so if you have a, a room like this, for example, the structure that spans this space, probably there's a certain dimension that that has to, has to be to support the, the floors above.
I understand.
So based on the, the fact that you have a, typically a deeper structure, and then you have, again, like I said, with the mechanical systems, the ductwork, where the air is flowing through, those will typically be larger in diameter. So you may have a duct that's 34 inches in diameter. So trying to weave all of that underneath the structure and above the ceilings, that's where that extra... where that extra two feet, it doesn't sound like much, but that extra two feet really makes a big difference.
Okay, and this is...
And so, again, the mechanical farm is located, kind of centrally located, so trying to get all the ductwork out of that to feed the rest of the building, um, also drives the need for that extra space.
So, as it relates to the ordinance that requires a variance, if we are going to be using farm-based standards, then why has the precedent been set at this? Like, to make developers come in or architect, yeah, developers come in to have to shift them? Like, I feel like...
Oh, why was it set at fourteen feet instead of sixteen feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I'm asking. Like, what, where, where does that come from is what I want to understand.
I, I think it, it comes from, you know, you, you have that range of, you know, eight to ten feet for your typical ceiling height and then your drop ceiling and your ductwork above, so that...
That's like typical?
So, that, yeah, so that four... Just shut off. The fourteen-foot height has worked for a lot of new developments. We haven't really run into this before, and I think the answer is the sizing of the ductwork that was just pointed out.
Okay.
That it's, you know, it might be four times larger or more than what you typically would have in a, in a smaller commercial building.
Understand, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Do we count the entrance off the bridge from the parking garage in their doorways? Or does that not count because it's on an upper level?
So, good, good question on that. So, the...
I know it's not going to get them to the number, but...
Well, the ordinance is, um, the farm-based standards are, are silent on the interior sides of the building, since the focus is on the street-facing facades. So, those doors are not factored into this variance request. Those are all, you know, that's...
That was more curiosity than anything.
But, but you're right, that, that, you know, when you look at, say, oh, well, there's a, if you were to think that was a shortfall, only have fifteen entry locations, you know, there's, there's a whole lot more on the south side that face the, where the creek comes through.
Anybody have any other questions for Sir Eltridge? No? All right, where's my agenda for tonight? Uh, I suppose we should open it up for the public hearing portion then. Anybody? Let me get my regular script out for this, right? Where'd it go? All right, so at this point, the public is invited to comment. At the podium, you are to sign and clearly state your name and address and prevent your comment, present your comments within the three-minute time limit. I would say please keep your remarks brief. Three minutes is not a lot of time. Those in favor would be invited to speak first, those opposed second, and then we will turn to call-in comments. And then from there, the board will move on to more about this. Anybody in the audience wishing to come up and speak in favor of some or all of these variances? I see none. Anybody wish to come up and speak against any or all of them? Again, I am seeing none. Do we have any call-ins?
And I'm checking right now. The line is open, and there is no callers waiting. So, we have no call-in comments for this group of variances.
Thank you. So, here we will move on to the finding of fact portion, and I didn't lay this out at the beginning because we're doing this in a unique way for this, this particular set of requests. So, we'll close the public hearing and then the board will, will be conducting what is called a finding of fact. This is where the board states what they feel are the facts of the request. The board must approve the finding of fact. Therefore, the first vote you hear is not a ruling on the request, but on an acceptance, on accepting the finding of fact following this. The board discusses the request, uh, and will move on to a vote. That second vote is the important part. And ahead of this, because there are so many requests tonight, my thought, or Pete's thought, our thought, was have a blanket finding of fact that would cover the first ten, but we need to vote on them all individually to make sure our votes are recorded on each of them individually. So, does anybody want to, uh, make a motion on the finding of fact? I think that's Beth.
I move that the finding of facts for 411 West Kalamazoo Avenue for the Event Center Building shall include all information included in the notice of public hearing dated April 24th of 2024 and the agenda packet staff provided for this request. Twenty notices of public hearing were sent and zero responses were received. A public hearing was held before the board, public comments were accepted, as were additional documents and voice, vo, voice messages as follows. There were zero people, um, here to speak in favor of the request, there were zero people here to speak against, and there were, um, zero, um, call-in comments. The fact, in addition to all the things I've just mentioned, the finding of facts will also include the following. The facts presented regarding circumstances or conditions of the property or structures that are special circumstances or conditions not commonly, commonly found on other lots or structures in the same zone district that make this, uh, request unique. We have three people from Tower Pinkster that spoke on the project today. The first person was Mr. Steve Looney. He is the, uh, project manager from Tower Spink, Tower, uh, Pinkster. Essentially, the, the basic site design overview of the arenas, the arena is going to contain an ice sheet, basketball courts, a multi-use event hall. The south side entrance, uh, facing downtown Kalamazoo, um, does not have a street-facing facade. WMU has worked very closely with Tower Spink, Pinkster and this project. So, for example, the WMU coaches' offices, Bronco Hockey Team, K-Wings are all going to have a window in this building, they're, they're moving to this location. The north side entrance of the building is for, mostly for community use, for example, youth hockey. There's a, um, the view, the, uh, West Age, uh, is a service view entrance, um, it's a multi-use space. There's also going to be, um, the area is going to be large enough with the loading dock and shipping and receiving where, um, there'll be room for buses and, um, um, so like a radio station or music or, um, the things like that to, um, draw people, um, downtown. There is, um, what gives the building, or this area, especially on the, um, first floor, a glassy look is this, uh, terracotta product. There is also, um, from the Arcadia Plaza parking deck, there's an enclosed connector, which makes it nice, uh, for people going from the parking ramp into the event center. The parking deck, uh, has three staircases, they're all clear glass. Yeah, also important consideration is, is a safety, having it all clear, um, and the parking deck is eight stories. Within the structure, um, there is the opportunity, um, for, um, commercial, um, space to have vendors, um, on each of the three floors. Water Street will have a pedestrian walk-through, which is really cool, um, so that way buses and, and students and hopefully people on their bikes, everybody on foot, they will be able to cut through, um, into, uh, through the, um, parking structure area to get into the event center and not be caught up in all the, the cars and the traffic, all that fun stuff. All right, so that's what I have so far for Mr. Looney on the general overview of the project. Then we have Ms. Laura Klosterman and Mr. Jeff Brizel, um, from Tower Pinkster as the project architects. They have broken up the, um, ten, um, dimensional variance requests, so I'm going to speak a little bit, um, as to what they had to say on that. Okay, with regard to the building sighting, the first variance, uh, request focuses on, um, the front door. The front door comes under the front line of coverage. They're asking for some relief because they are accommodating the, they need to accommodate the Kalamazoo Valley River Trail, um, that is a dimensional variance number one. Ties in with, uh, variance request number two. There's an occupancy of the corner, um, the left corner occupant, the right, the left corner, um, there's, is occupied, but the right corner is not. This is due to, uh, Kalamazoo Valley River Trail. Number three at the front, um, again, first three, they're, they're all about the, um, accommodations, um, that are needed for the Kalamazoo, uh, Valley River Trail. Mr. Brizel spoke to, um, the next few variances, first one, um, regarding height. There's been a lot of conversation about this and essentially what it means is in the past, the variance has been good, fourteen-foot maximum has worked well. However, in the city of Kalamazoo, we have not had, um, a building of this magnitude. So, if you think about the HVAC system and the plumbing and everything that's going to be needed, um, all those components are going to be larger, they're going to be bigger, um, and they need to have that extra height. For number five, next few variances, we're, we're talking about floor transparency. So, we've got all these street-facing facades, considerations need to be taken for light, security, um, controlling the flow of traffic, and then when you really take everything apart and break it down, there are a lot of unique features. So, for instance, the, the giant loading dock area, the ice, um, the ice pad that they've got, that, that we need to have, um, the event center area, those are not areas where people are watching events that they want people staring at them. You know, you, you need to have a little bit more privacy in those areas. Yeah, they need to keep the ice cool. There's also the, um, the outdoor farm to make the, the mechanical equipment, um, look nicer. Let's see, um, there's some, there's, it was brought up, um, facades with the blank wall, um, things like that, but they all tie in together. So, for instance, the blank wall, the practice basketball court, for what you're using this arena for, um, this, this project needs to have relief from some of those transparency requirements, um, because they just don't, um, just don't fit with the, with the project. Okay. I've got more, no worries.
Sounds like a threat.
Oh, yeah, I've, I've got more, I'm just going to make sure. Okay, here we go. All right. I was taking notes fast and furious here. All right, uh, for number eight, we're talking about the entrances and, um, the entrance location. They've tried to cluster the interest, entrance, entrances for efficiency and security access. Ms. Klosterman, we had some conversation about the bike parking and, um, the, the folks here on the board that spoke to that, um, weren't the only ones, um, that had quest, had the exact same time questions and it, you know, it, it's something to seriously consider if the city is committed to having all of these bike lanes, um, and that the variance is asking for, 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 one hundred and forty-four is required, but we're putting sixty in. And then at the same time, when you, when you drill everything down, uh, the reality is that the ratio doesn't necessarily fit, um, the, the picture, um, because of the number of people that are in the arena. So, you know, uh, Tower Pinkster is requesting relief for that to have sixty. There's some conversation, um, yeah, with, you know, staff commenting that the city's worked with the applicant for over a year, um, and, you know, when you take into consideration the other buildings downtown here and the people that are coming to work every day that, that would be most apt to use, um, to utilize the, um, bike parking, um, it, it's, it's kind of like apples to oranges, it's not really the same thing. They are planning on having, um, thirty, um, bike spaces on the north side and then another thirty under the roof of the parking deck on the first floor, so that would give them some protection. With that, and then, um, staff also had some comments about the positioning of the, one of the main bike parkings is going to be out front, so that sends a positive message and people will see that. They'll see those out front first, and then there's an extra thirty around, um, under the roof. Was also some conversation too about, you know, is it feasible? Maybe we should give up some garage space to, to get close to one forty-four if, if we had to, if, if it came down to that. Mr. Brizel jumped back in and, uh, spoke to the width of the driveway at the West Age, um, service entrance. They need the driveway, they're requesting ninety-one feet, whereas the, um, maximum is twenty-four feet. But if you look at everything that they're trying to do with the broadcast area and the buses coming in, um, and just, you know, all the food, the deliveries, all of that, they feel that, that it's needed. And then there's also, when you drill down, if they wanted to have separate driveways like, like they could do, um, and they broke that all down, what they're asking for when you merge it together is actually less than what the zoning, um, requirements, what they could do. Then we had, um, staff comments and some additional discussion. Let's see. Some of this I've already jumped in and folded it into, um, the variances as I was going through. I may have got them all. Oh, there's a, some discussion here about the entrances, the volumes, the volume. There's, uh, fifteen-door locations, there're more on the south side facing the creek, three street-facing facades, it's created some challenges, um, including the loading dock needs for having those entrance. And so, when you factor in security, the flow, transparency, the, the way the building is situated on the lot and the Kalamazoo, uh, Valley River Trail, um, that's what we've got, and, um, I'm done.
That was impressive, Beth.
I was going to say, I was going to say nicely done. Anybody second this?
Well, thank you.
Somebody please second it. There you go. Thank you. Any discussion on the finding of fact that Beth read out?
Lousy lady.
So, can we take a vote on that? Do we need to do a roll call vote on the finding of fact? Do we need to do a roll call vote on the finding of fact? Voice vote, all those in favor, then all those in favor of the specific of adopting the specific finding of fact, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please signify by saying aye. Nobody opposed. All right. So we need to probably have at least a tiny bit of discussion, maybe more, on the individual request. And then I think once we do the discussion, I'm just going to make the motion one by one through these and somebody can second them and then we can take the vote on them I can speak on all. Sorry, Charlie, you're gonna say something different?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I was going to say something. You as chair cannot make the motion.
Okay.
You can request.
Okay.
Or say you will entertain a motion.
Thank you. Then somebody else will make the request, but so any discussion on any specific one, any of them altogether, I may or anything you want to say about any of them. I will say something on all of them if nobody else wants to.
I have some stuff I want to discuss, if that's okay.
Go for it.
Mr. Chair, what you can do is we can have somebody put the make the motion, second it, get it on the table, then have the discussion and vote for each one.
I think we can do this generally unless we really want to break these all down individually.
I can't.
And discuss them all step by step. I don't have a preference, I don't care.
I like breaking it down and doing it step by step.
We'll do it that way then.
Okay.
At least, at least, you know, the first three, and then we can go into the height, four, and then a street facade or street-facing facade, five, six, seven, and eight.
So can can we do it like a motion to adopt or approve one, two, and three and read them and then discuss them and then vote on them, one, two, and three? You're the one that's gonna have to defend us in court if it comes down to it.
Well, I suppose the short answer is can you, you could, I I think.
You'd rather we didn't, though.
Deal with each one individually.
Fair enough, fair enough. So please, somebody make a motion on the first one. Since I can't.
What's what's gonna happen?
Somebody's gonna make a motion to approve, somebody will second, we will discuss, then we will vote, then we'll do the second one. Yes.
Okay.
So we're gonna, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance, ZBA number 240509, at address 411 West Kalamazoo Avenue. And we'll start with number one.
Any second of that one? Thank you. Now we can have discussion on it. Any anybody have any hot discussion they need to add on?
I just have a general point for all 10.
Go for it.
Just in general. I still need some more professional development on understanding form-based standards, but saying that.
Probably all do, honestly.
Right? At this point, my position is that there's some like just the incongruency of the ordinances, like with the municipal plan coupled with how when developers have to come in and request these variances, it just feels like somehow there's a performative aspect to the in in the in an element of selective enforcement to what we require of major developers, like you mentioned the country club and this particular development. And I don't have a fully formed question and or statement yet about it, but it just feels like I I really question that. So we've done so much to affect the quality of life of people in our community with these shifts with the bike lanes. And then when these major developers come in, like we, the city, it appears like in their report and on constituent boards like this, say, oh, well, we've worked with them for a year and a half to justify reducing what this requirement is, it's just an incongruency with that, that I don't like that. I love this event center idea, I think it's gonna be dope, like I live close to downtown, I live downtown, I'm for it, I'm 100% with this. But I personally would like to see, like, the things that we say we want to happen in our community, like us having a multimodal community, I'm in alignment with that also. But I'd like for us to think more imaginatively and more collaboratively with our development teams to make it feel better for the community so that when even smaller projects or smaller developers come in and we hold them hostage to these ordinances where they might not have really sophisticated teams like this, I know that, like, with my little small minor things that I did when I brought before the board, there was very, very little leeway for me. And those are the things that I I have a question about. Like, I don't like how that feels being on this board, I have to, I would be remiss to not say that.
No, and I I don't I don't need Pete to respond, but I appreciate what you're getting at, which is the why are why are we asked to give these massive projects a break versus, I don't know, little mom and pop store around the corner? Like, we we're holding them to different standards. And I get where you're coming from on that. If I had to speak to that generally to take the devil's advocate side of it, I I don't think that the, this is probably why we've got 17 in front of us, the zoning probably was not set up to even account for a this kind of project. Like, this is like the white whale kind of a thing out there that no matter where it was, they were gonna have to ask for the same amount or more or worse. Yeah, I asked before the meeting, why didn't the city commission just carve that area out and like rezone it whatever so we didn't have to be here doing any of this? But they, that probably would have been a harder thing than for us to just have a meeting and get it over with in a night. But I I take that. I do think about that when I vote on them from from week to week or month to month. No, I don't vote the other three weeks you guys aren't here, because I'm not here either. Thank you, Remy, I appreciate that. The thing I would say about the first three are really what came down to, and my vote's gonna be the same on all three of them, obviously, is because the Kalamazoo River Valley Trail's gotta go somewhere and it's staying on this site, they're sort of backed into a corner. And I, you know, unless you dug a tunnel under the building, which is not feasible, I imagine, and not realistic, you're gonna have this problem no matter where you put it. Like, if you put it between the parking garage and the the arena, you're gonna have issues there. If you run it around the other side of everything, this issue is just gonna shift from street to street to street. And I want the the trail to stay there, so kinda have to bite the bullet and approve these ones. That's why I would vote in favor of them. Anybody else got anything to say, at least on number one or generally speaking? Excellent, let's take a vote on number one then. I don't need to add, we've already had the motion, so I can, you can just take the vote then, right?
Correct.
Thank you. This is voting to approve number one of the building siding.
That's correct. And we'll start with Vanden Hamburg.
Yes.
Work.
Yes.
Holder.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Han.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Any any opposed? None?
No.
Yay, that is approved by whatever the count was, two, three, six of us, six, nothing, that's approved. Excellent. Somebody please motion on the second one.
I make a motion to approve the variance DBA number 240509, at address 411 West Kalamazoo, number two.
Any dis- no, we need a second.
I second.
Any discussion on point two?
No.
Please take the vote then.
For variance number two, Vanden Hamburg.
Yes.
Work.
Yes.
Holder.
Yes.
Han.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Thank you. Six, nothing, that one passes and is approved. Thank you. Please make a motion on three, somebody.
I make a motion to approve a dimensional variance from chapter 50, 5.6C, for to allow a build-to-zone of 4'8" to 36.4" when a build zone of 0 to 10 feet is required along Kalamazoo Avenue. I second.
Thank you. And she might have mis- she might have misread the the particular chapter in there. But the one in the the one in the agenda is the one she's referring to.
Okay, and the, and I'm sorry, who read the second?
I did.
Thank you, now Ms. Han. Any discussion on number three?
As far as changing the chapter, you can do that. She has to approve in the second.
Has to approve as well.
Thank you. So the chapter was 50-5.6C1A4, and I think you put too many Cs in there somehow. That's fine. Do you approve that change?
I approve the change.
The second, do you?
I approve.
Thank you. We good? Good. Now take the vote, please.
Vanden Hamburg.
Yes.
Work.
Yes.
Holder.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Han.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Thank you, that one is also approved, six, nothing. Let's move on to four, please somebody make a motion for four.
Dimensional variance from chapter 50-5.6C217 to allow upper floors of the building to be 16 feet in height, where 14 feet is the maximum height for upper floors.
Does somebody second the motion to approve this variance?
I second.
Any discussion? I'll say something if nobody else wants to. The size of the building requires that it needs different ceiling heights, or not different ceiling heights, but different structural issues for the roof, given the spans involved and the amount of air and other things that have to move. So it's it's just good sense to to approve the variance in the height. And it's really not going to be, it's not really gonna be that big of a change to the building in any sort of aesthetic or, you know, other way. So I'm gonna I'm gonna approve, I'm gonna vote and approve. Vote in favor of approving it. My words are good tonight. Anybody else want to discuss on it?
How tall is the building gonna be now?
Did I see that on our packet? I mean, if Steve wants to just shout out the number or David or Jeff.
I thought it was 10, and then the, I know the, I asked the parking structure's eight.
Do you just have an overall height in feet?
The overall height of the event center was around 88 feet, 88 foot three to the highest point.
It's literally gonna be the difference between like 86 feet and 88 feet. Is it's the two-foot variance or is that, nah, whatever.
That's the total, that's the total building height.
Yeah.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Good question. Somebody made a motion on that, somebody seconded it, I said something, any other discussion on it? Pete, you wanna take the vote?
This is a vote for request number four. Vanden Hamburg.
Yes.
Work.
Yes.
Holder.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Han.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Thank you, that carries six to nothing as well and is approved. Somebody.
All right.
Please take five.
Street-facing facades, I make a motion to approve a dimensional variance from chapter 50, 5.6C4A20 to allow ground floor transparency levels of 66% for Kalamazoo Avenue, 57% for Westnage Avenue, and 47% for Park Street where 70% transparency is required.
I second it.
Thank you. Do, does anybody want any discussion on five?
No.
I don't really have anything relevant to add other than what the applicants offered in their their explanation. Would you like to take a vote, Pete?
Vanden, Vanden Hamburg.
Yes.
Work.
Yes.
Holder.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Han.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
That carries as well and is approved. Next is six.
I make a motion to approve a dimensional variance from chapter 50, 5.6C4A21 to allow 0% upper floor transparency along Westnage Avenue where 20% transparency is required. I second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? The applicant made a good case for it, basically has to do with being able to heat the building and all of that sort of thing. And you don't want a lot of sun from the west on the ice rink, et cetera, et cetera. Anybody else want to add anything else?
No.
What number are we on? That's on.
Number six.
Thank you. There's so many. Would you take the vote on six? And bear in mind, we've still got seven more that are just waiting down here. Can't wait to get to them, guys.
Vanden Hamburg.
Yes.
Work.
Yes.
Holder.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Han.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Thank you, that one carries and is approved, also six, nothing. Somebody make a motion on seven, please.
I move a dimensional variance from chapter 50-5.6C4A22 to allow blank wall areas exceeding the 30% requirement on both Westnage Avenue and Park Street.
Second, anybody?
I second.
Thank you. My only discussion on this one would be, it seems like seven and five are basically the same request, but because they're under slightly different chapters or subparts, whatever, they have to be voted on differently. But it feels to me like if you're in favor of the one, you're gonna be in favor of the other for the same reasons.
They're definitely interrelated when you talk about transparency and blank wall space.
Though I am curious if anybody really wants to argue against it now.
I'd just be wanting to.
Thank you. If there's no other discussion, you want to take the vote, please, Pete?
Vanden Hamburg.
Yes.
Work.
Yes.
Holder.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Han.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Excellent, that carries as well, six, two, nothing. Somebody please make a motion on eight.
I make a motion to approve a dimensional variance from chapter 50, 5.6C4B25 to allow only 15 entrances where the requirement is one per 60 feet totaling 24 for the three street-facing facades.
Somebody second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion on it? I mean, I'll discuss on it if somebody, nobody wants to.
Do we have anything new to add?
We don't have to discuss on it. My thinking on the entrance thing is real, the similar to what it was for, is it the Boys and Girls Club? Where it's just, it's a security issue. Plus, this has got a massive building that six, an entrance every 60 feet seems a bit much realistically. But I understand what these ordinance is. But I think the reasons that were given were very trenchant as as to security and those other things, so I'm gonna vote in favor of it. Anybody else want to discuss?
No.
Excellent. Mr. Eldridge, please take the vote.
Vanden Hamburg.
Yes.
Work.
Yes.
Holder.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
Han.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Thank you, that carries and is approved as well, six, nothing. Somebody make a motion on nine, please.
All right, I make a motion to approve a dimensional variance from chapter 57.31 to allow 60 bike parking spaces where 144 are required based on the maxim- maximum occupancy.
I second.
Thank you. Remy, I really want you to argue why that we shouldn't approve this one.
I mean, in 2076, we might need all 144, and this is a built-to-suit, right, situation. We might not even be playing hockey no more. We won't even know, like, we might have rations on ice and water, we don't know. We might have to make that into a bicycle rink, I don't know, that's.
Could we always add more bicycle parking in the future, though?
Well, I think once you approve the variance, you're sort of locked in stone with these people for that number. They can put more in, but they're not required and we can't walk around and, you know, oh, we changed our mind, we want 144.
Okay.
But later on, they could, they could put 144. But later on, they could, they could put a hundred and forty-four, think of it in terms of the marijuana shop the other month, where they wanted a massive amount of parking, and we said, no, come back when you prove you need it. You could vote against this, saying, no, you've gotta have a hundred and forty-four, come back later if you wanna take out the eighty-four, 'cause they're just always unused.
That's true, you guys were team players, thank you for that.
I wanna hear what Alan has to say.
Yes.
Now, I was thinking about saying that if consumer demand is for that, that is how a responsive arena operator responds, and that's how the market system works.
That's how it works.
Yeah, if all sixty bike parking spots are full, they can take up
I got it.
car spaces and allow for more bike parking.
Thank you.
And I do think covered bicycle parking is very good, and I think, and I think it's predictable there'll be more covered parking
In the future?
For bicycles, yes. Especially if you look at major cities, especially in other countries, as to how bike parking has grown, that's predictable that that would happen here, I really do think so.
I agree too. For real.
So if I'm hearing you, it's approve the sixty, and if they're a smart business person or
Arena operator.
Whatever, they'll add extra later.
Moving forward.
If demand is, is in place for that, yes. And I think in a hope for future, there will be more bicycles used, electric and, uh, human powered bikes.
Facts on facts.
Fair enough.
And I, I would like to say I'm really glad we had this discussion, because, you know, you're not the only one, I did research and I had some conversation before this meeting with the exact same question. And, and I do want it on the record, because Kalamazoo, the city has done so much with all of these bike lanes. I don't want it to come back five years from now, twenty years from now, oh, Beth, you just passed that, that through to accommodate Western in the arena. You know, we need, we need to, to, to have that discussion, and then when you, again, factor in the ratio, you know, of the expectations and the, the, you know, so I mean, I'm, I'm good with it.
I think also, if I'm, like, being a hundred percent, like, about this, I think that major developers, like, if they were working in alignment with the city, it would reflect, like, an encouragement, if we did what they asked in this way, or with, like, this, we haven't addressed the issue of natural features protection on this, but if they accommodated that, I think it would be a good gesture towards the community to, um, set a precedent. Since we've done all this with the bike lanes in our city, like you're outlining, Beth, then major developers like this doing what, like, putting all that there would encourage the, or even incentivizing, like, the Kalamazoo Farmers Market, you know, like, they incentivize them to ride their bikes to the Kalamazoo Farmers Market, there could be incentives attached to people encouraging multimodal communities, and I think that developers could be doing more in that way.
I have one more thing to say, um, about the bikes. Yes, there are a lot of bike lanes, um, that have been created lately. I do know that there's another phase to that, and, um, is anyone familiar with the electric bikes and the electric scooters that are kind of about national, especially in DC?
What's going on, tell us?
Well, you...
You mean like the Lime scooters that are all over the sidewalks?
Oh, we're gonna have that here?
Yes.
It's gonna be cute.
Yeah, so there, you know, there's gonna be more traffic in those bike lanes, and of course, they have their own parking, um, they're not gonna park in a garage or whatever, so.
We can have that there.
We're gonna have that here.
That's good. We need that, that's cute.
Yeah, so anyway, that's...
Can't wait to see how many have to be pulled out of the river, 'cause people threw them in there.
Nobody's gonna put that in the pervert jar.
Um, I'm gonna vote in favor of this one, the only thing for, for the reasons of, I honestly think sixty is probably sufficient for the stadium itself, uh, and the zoning was probably meant, as I said, for office buildings and that sort of thing, not a seven thousand people in this one given space. Most people are gonna come there by car. The only thing I will say about it is, um, I don't want to rely, in the future in general, on the number of bike spaces at other businesses around the arena, because those could go away if that business goes away or that building disappears. That is a for-now thing, not a with-this arena thing. But, that being said, I'm still gonna vote for it. You wanna take the vote?
Van den Humber?
Yes.
Work?
Yes.
Holder?
Um, no, no, yes, I'm a yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Thank you, that is approved, six to nothing as well. Somebody, motion on ten.
I make a motion to approve a dimensional variance from chapter fifty, seven point five, A one, B, to allow the driveway for the loading area on Westnige Avenue to be ninety-one feet where twenty-four foot is the maximum driveway width.
Second.
Uh, thank you. I will say on this that my question as to the applicant was, you could even have more driveway if you wanted it. If you spread it around, and the answer was yes, and I believe Pete also indicated the answer was yes, uh, it just makes sense to limit it as much as possible, and while ninety-one feet is fifty-seven feet wider than normally allowed, there's one of them, and it's gonna handle everything and puts it all in one spot. So I'm gonna vote in favor of it. Anybody else? Take the vote.
Van den Humber?
Yes.
Work?
Yes.
Holder?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Thank you, that is approved, six, nothing. Um, since we normally don't go this long, I guess I will say, does anybody need five minutes to run to the bathroom or anything? We can take a quick break if needed. Yes, we will take, I'm gonna put, I'm gonna put five minutes in, on the watch, I, yes, that's why I said, I'll put five minutes, we'll all take a break and we'll come back. My, my timer has gone off. Let us, let us proceed, gentlemen and ladies and non-binary folks amongst you. Beth, excellent. Never really aware of the sound of your own voices, but you come back and turn on the microphone again. All right, so, moving on to presentation two then, about the parking deck variances. Let's try to hew to the ten minutes on this one, because some of this is going to just be repeating what was said before, and I, I, nobody cut you off on the last one, so, kinda just, I'm not saying breeze through it, but breeze through it. Yeah. 'Cause it is redundant. Go for it. Oh, hold on. Remy, you've gotta read it in.
Yes, I do.
Sorry, I'm getting ahead of things, my apologies, that is me.
I lost my glasses, 'cause it's very interesting, okay.
It's been a night.
An application for a variance for provisions of the zoning ordinance have been filed with the Zoning Board of Appeals by CD Arena LLC, and they're requesting the following variances. The applicant is requesting the following variances for the parking deck building siting. Number one, a dimensional variance from chapter fifty dash five point six, C one, A two, to allow zero front line coverage where the relinqu, excuse me, requirement is seventy percent along Park Street. Number two, a dimensional variance from chapter fifty dash five point six, C one, A three, for relief from the requirement that the building occupy the corner at Park Street and Water Street. Number three, a dimensional variance from chapter fifty dash five point six, C one, A four, to allow a built-to-zone of zero feet to one hundred and twelve feet, four inches, where a built-to, built-to-zone of zero to ten feet is required. A use variance, right? Yes. Um, number four, from chapter fifty dash five point six, C three, nineteen, to allow relief from the requirement that there be occupied space on both the first and second floors of the parking deck along Westnige Avenue and Water Street. Street facing facade, number five, a dimensional variance from chapter fifty dash five point six, C four, A twenty, to allow ground floor transparency levels of thirty-three percent for Westnige Avenue and nineteen percent for Water Street where seventy percent transparency is required. Number six, a dimensional variance from chapter fifty dash five point six, C four, A twenty-two, to allow blank wall areas exceeding the thirty percent requirement on both Westnige Avenue and Water Street. Number seven, a dimensional variance from chapter fifty dash five point six, C four, B two, twenty-five, excuse me, to allow the parking deck to have one entrance on the Westnige Avenue facade where two entrances are required.
Thank you.
Please.
Go for it. I jumped right over, you finish your spot.
No, it's okay. Um, please note that this request will not change the zoning for classification of the property.
Thank you, I'm, I did that the first one, too. Now we would invite the applicant up to present on these ones. Obviously, some of these, as we were saying, are a bit redundant from the ones, but I think for me, the new ones are going to be number four, which is the use variance, which I probably wanna hear more on, and number seven, which is about the entrances, but your presentation, wow me. That's wow.
Sorry about that. The first three here are exactly the same, under the exact same category as we saw as the first three on the event center. So, um, as you can see on these images, the event center is grayed out, so the parcel we're dealing with is that deck parcel to the south. The front of the parking deck, as you would interpret it, is the side facing Park Street. So, uh, there is a occupied space along that edge, which, uh, makes it the front. The reason on these is different from the reason that we gave on the event center, but it is a similar, um, situation. So, the first request is related to this front lot line coverage, we are requesting, um, a variance for providing zero percent front lot line coverage here, because the building is so far from that ten-foot setback, um, the reason being that common space that you saw in that first image when Steve presented is being provided in that space. So that is a wonderful community amenity we anticipate, um, but could not be provided if we accommodated that front facade right up against the edge. We can go back to that image kinda later at our discussion point, I think that might be useful for providing justification for these, but, um, these all fall under that sort of rationalization. So, we have the front lot line coverage requests here. This is the no occupancy of that corner request, so we do occupy the corner in the area where Westnige and Water intersect, but we do not occupy the corner where Water and Park intersect. And then this is the, uh, build-two-zone variance, so we, as you can see, are much further than the ten feet from that Park Street, we are, uh, a hundred, uh, twelve and nine inches, um, but that is, I think, appropriate for that common space.
Request number four is for the occupied space. What we've done here is we've, um, highlighted the areas where we're seeking the variance along Water Street and Westnige. Main driver there is, um, obviously the, the main function of the, of the parking garage is for parking, and so, um, we were limited on trying to carve out space for other program use, other than trying to maximize as much square footage as we could for parking. So, we were limited on the site with Water Street to the south and the creek to the north, so really the area that we could build the garage is in that long, skinny, narrow lot. So, in order to really maximize the number of parking spots available, we really had to use every inch that we could. So because of that, the first and second floors are really dedicated to either vehicular traffic The next item is street-facing facades, number five. That's ground floor transparency. Similar to our discussions with the event center, the ground floor, we were seeking variances for Westnich and Water Street. This elevation is actually the creek side, so that's not relevant. But the Water Street elevation is, it's broken up into two halves. So, this is the southwest half and this is the southeast half. So, the building was too, the garage was, whoops, sorry. The garage was wide enough that we had to break it up into two. And then, this elevation here is the Westnich elevation. So, again, the first floor is dedicated really to vehicular traffic. So, there's not a lot of opportunity to include transparency, glazing. But as Steve mentioned earlier on, we tried to be conscious of the fact that this is a big structure, but we're trying to break it down to the pedestrian level. There's going to be people walking along the street. So, all of the first floor will be, have an architectural treatment to it. It'll be a screen wall. So, we're looking at detailing in the brick, providing little pockets in the brick so you can still see through it. But again, there's just not that opportunity to provide glass and transparency at that first floor. So, again, we're at 33%, seeking a variance for 33% for Westnich and 19% transparency for Water Street. Or, I'm sorry, yeah, 19% for Water Street. And so, again, the elevations that you see here, I tried to color coordinate the blue is actually the glass. And the yellow areas are, there's no, it's just, it's open. So, it's a parking deck, right? So, again, the facade, we've tried to add some architectural elements to add some interest to it. So, there is a screen that goes around it. So, we're trying to break it down so the scale doesn't feel so, so big. The next variance request is the street-facing facades, number six, the blank wall limitations. Again, this is very similar to what we talked about with the event center. We're seeking a variance for Westnich elevation, which is, let me go back here. Is this elevation up here in the upper left-hand corner. We're at 40% for Westnich, 30% max is what the ordinance requires. The main driver of that is this center section is where the bulk of the blank wall is. That's really being driven by the fact that that's a, it's a structural element. It's a sheer wall. So, that's, that blank wall section in the center is really required to, for the stability and structural support of the parking deck itself. As you can see here, we are trying to break that down a bit and include some openings just to kind of add some light into that space and kind of break down the scale of that. But really, the bulk of that mass is needed for the structure of the building or the parking garage itself. The last variance request is street-facing facade, number seven, entrance locations. And again, we're seeking, if you go by the calculation, the Westnich elevation requires two entrances. We are providing one, and that's really a vehicular entrance. And that's in this upper left-hand corner of the, of the plan. We really could only provide one, one entrance on that facade because at the vehicular traffic inside the garage, there's going to be cars traveling along that facade. So, there's really not an opportunity to provide another entrance because you'd be walking into the, into the flow of the traffic that serves the garage. So, that's kind of the main driver for our request to have just one entrance on that facade. Short and sweet.
Turn my microphone on too, by the way. Anybody have any questions for them? I do not. No, excellent, thank you. Staff comments?
And I'll keep them brief. I just want to mention that the, that first grouping of variances for the front lot line coverage, corner occupancy, and build-two-zone, we reviewed this as Park Street being the frontage for the parking deck and Calmazoo Avenue being the frontage for the event center because it looks like, in the long run, this is going to have to be split into two separate parcels based on consumer's energy and the power feeds. So, that is, you know, if this was all one parcel, you know, and we didn't have to have multiple, you know, primary frontages, so to speak, that would have reduced the number of variances there at the beginning. So, but as far as the practical difficulty, you know, applying that all those standards would leave no space for the plaza that's proposed. The only open space would really have to be in the interior of the site between the buildings, which would be an unfortunate outcome. And the occupied space, I think, speaks for itself. The developer has, you know, done a great job of incorporating office space into the east end of the parking deck. So, that's why that area was not highlighted, or that frontage, I should say. But along Water Street and Westnich, there's, you know, in order to utilize the parking deck for what it is, you can't easily accommodate office space or some other commercial use in there. And then, the transparency, I don't have any additional comments to add on that. Again, the practical difficulty is really the use of the structure. And that applies to the blank wall area and the entrance, you know, the reduction in the number of entrances along Westnich.
Thank you. Did anybody want to ask Pete any questions?
I do.
Go for it.
So, the courthouse, the courthouse entrance is on the other side, but the event center frontage will be facing Calmazoo Avenue? Is that right?
You're asking where the entrance is to the courthouse? So, that would be on the?
No, I'm asking, I'm just restating what I thought I heard you say, which is that the front, the courthouse's, the courthouse's entrance is on the other, is going to be on the opposite side of where the event center's frontage is going to be. Like, the frontage of the event center is going to be facing Calmazoo Avenue. That's, I'm just restating what I thought I heard you say.
Yeah, I was, I was saying that the parking deck, the primary frontage is Park Street. And for the event center building itself, the primary frontage is Calmazoo Avenue.
Okay.
Is that?
Yeah, I was just asking.
Did that cover it? I'm trying to think of what else I said there.
Yeah.
I've lost my, I've lost my other thoughts.
No, you're good. Thank you. I guess we should open the public hearing portion. So, anybody who wants to step up and speak in favor of some or any of these requested variances should do so now. Don't everybody rush to the microphone. You'll get your chance. Seeing none, anybody wish to come forward and speak against the request? Again, seeing none, do we have any call-in comments?
Okay, the line is open. And I don't have any calls in the queue.
Thank you.
So, we have no call-in comments.
Thank you. I should say the public hearing portion is on the parking deck variances specifically, if I didn't say so. Thank you. All right, so then, we need a finding of fact. Would somebody like to make that motion?
I'll make the finding of fact. I move that the finding of facts for 411 West Calmazoo Avenue for the parking deck, it shall include information included in the notice of public hearing dated April 24th, 2024 in the agenda packet staff provided for this request as well as the presentation presented by the applicant here tonight. Twenty notices of public hearing were sent out, zero, there were zero responses received. There was no one on site to speak for or against the project, and there were no call-ins. There, again, we had Laura Klosterman and Jeff Brazil with Tower Pinkster. They discussed why they are requesting the variances. And basically, it's because they need every square inch of the property in order to, to build this event center and parking deck. Many of their requests on the parking deck are the same as the event center. And that is the finding of fact.
Thank you. Any second on the finding of fact?
I second.
Thank you. Do we need to have any discussion on the finding of fact itself? Thank you. Then I'll take the vote. All those in favor of adopting a specific finding of fact, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Though, I'm also an aye, sorry. Those opposed, please signify by saying aye. There are no opposed. So, the finding of fact is approved or adopted, whichever word we need is the one you should use from those two. All right. So, then, we need to make, start making motions for all seven of these requested variances. And then, we will discuss them in turn as needed.
I move approval of a dimensional variance from chapter 50-5.6C1A2 to allow zero frontline coverage where the requirement is 70% along Park Street.
I second that.
Thank you. I'm in favor of this because, I think I'm in favor of the first three for the same reasons, which are, if you hold them to the zoning, you're not going to get any green space, basically. You'll get whatever in between them where they're shaded and nothing is going to grow anyway. So, this makes much more sense if we're, if we just don't want. If you just are opposed to big blocks of concrete or something downtown, this is a good use of that. But I think it's a good use of some green space in there, especially along the creek. So, that's why I'm voting in favor. Anybody else want to say anything else?
Good point, I agree.
No, do you agree?
Thank you. Take the vote, if you would, Mr. Eldridge.
Vanden Humber?
Yes.
Work?
Yes.
Holer?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
That one is approved, six to nothing. There were no noes. Thank you. Somebody make a motion on two.
I make a motion to approve a dimensional variance from chapter 50-5.6C1A3 for relief from the requirement that the building occupy the corner at Park Street and Water Street.
I second it.
Excellent. I've already said what I need to say on this. Does anybody else wish to add anything?
No.
Excellent. Mr. Eldridge, would you please take the vote?
And this is for request number two.
Yes.
Vanden Humber?
Yes.
Work?
Yes.
Holer?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
That variance is approved, six to nothing. Thank you. I demanded it before, but will somebody please make a motion on number three?
I move approval of a dimensional variance from chapter 50-5.6C1A4 to allow a build-to-zone of 0 feet to 112 feet 4 inches.
Build-to-zone of 0 to 10 feet is required.
Anybody have a second?
I second.
Excellent. Again, I don't need to add anything else. Does anybody want to add anything on this one?
No.
Then, would you take the vote, please?
This is regarding number three for the parking deck. Vanden Humber?
Yes.
Work?
Yes.
Holer?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
That is approved as well, with no, no votes and six in favor. Would somebody make a motion on number four?
I motion a use variance from chapter 50-5.6C319 to allow relief from the requirement that there be occupied space on both the first and second floors of the parking deck along Westnich Avenue and Water Street. I second.
Thank you. I'll say on this that the applicant did not say so, but in my mind, I'm treating Water Street to, as essentially the alley between this and the courthouse to its south. Since, what would be the point of putting in occupied space along what is essentially an alley there? And as for the Westnich portion, they've already essentially in their designs treated that as the back of the building. It makes no real good sense to put businesses in the back of the building either on that street. And that's why I'll be voting in favor of the variance. Anybody else want to say anything else? Would you take the vote then, Pete?
Vanden Humber?
Yes.
Work?
Yes.
Holer?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
That carries as well, six to nothing, and is approved. Would somebody motion for five?
I motion a dimensional variance from chapter 50-5.6C4A20 to allow ground floor transparency levels of 33% for Westnich Avenue and 19% for Water Street where 70% transparency is required.
I second that.
Thank you. I don't have anything trenchant to add, does anybody, other than what the applicant already said?
No.
No.
Excellent. You want to take the vote then, Pete?
Vanden Humber?
Yes.
Work?
Yes.
Holer?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
That, number five then, is approved, six to nothing. Thank you. Somebody please motion six.
I motion a dimensional variance from chapter 50-5.6C4A22 to allow blank wall areas exceeding the 30% requirement on both Westnich Avenue and Water Street. I second.
Thank you. I guess I will say on this one that I think they could probably hit the 30% requirement were you not required to have a structurally sound parking garage. If you, if you were willing to put up popsicle sticks and call it a parking garage, they could probably need it. I send, that's not the way he said it, but that's the way I took it, which is the, we can do it, but this might fall over. Which is why I will be, it's a parking garage, you need to be smart about it, which is why I'm voting in favor. Anybody else have anything else to add on it? Pete, you want to take the vote on number six?
I'm sorry, who seconded that one?
It was either Gary or Beth.
Beth did.
Beth did.
I did.
Okay. Shelby's keeping track over here, so.
Thank you.
Got that covered. All right, this is for variance number six related to the parking deck. Vanden Humber?
Yes.
Work?
Yes.
Holer?
Yes.
Harrington?
She said yes. But your microphone didn't pick it up.
Yes.
Thank you. Han?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
That is approved, six to nothing. Somebody please motion for seven.
I motion a dimensional variance from chapter 50-5.6C4B25 to allow parking deck to have one entrance on Westnich facade where two entrances are required.
I second it.
I think the applicant said everything I would say on this as to why they want one as opposed to two.
One big one?
One, I don't think it's one big one necessarily, but one. The issue is, they, I think the issue that he said- The issue is, they, I think the issue that he said was, if you put in a second one, they're gonna start crossing the line of traffic inside the garage.
Yeah, it was a safety issue because people would be crossing, and there would be traffic both ways, and someone could get hit.
And, safety is important. I have nothing other than, thank you for that, Gary. I have nothing else to add on that, anybody else? Pete, take the final vote.
Vanden Humber?
Yes.
Work?
Yes.
Holer?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Thank you, that request is approved as well. It appears seventeen were approved, six to nothing. And I hope that we did it all in the correct fashion, so I don't get yelled at after the meeting. Charlie never yells. Just like, make sure to do it this way, if you would remember.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I still would rather the hockey team stayed at Lawson, but I'm not holding that against the project. Thank you all for coming out tonight. This was clearly longer than normal, but it was a much bigger package than normal. Normally, it's like a weed shop, lots more parking. Shouldn't say normally, last week it was.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody. Do we have any other discussion or action items?
We do not for tonight.
No other reports, I imagine? Excellent, then we are adjourned. Good meeting, everybody.